City Council of Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty to order roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Wood.
Here.
Alderman Smarts. Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
And Mayor Police.
Here, the clear quorum present, please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the flag. States of America.
God bless America.
We were a little out of sync.
Oh, Peter, you are.
All right, before we started, pursuant to the updated Illinois Attorney General Guidance to Public Bodies on the Open Meetings Deck during the COVID nineteen pandemic dated July second, two thousand and twenty, Aldermen and elected officials of the city of Wood Dale may participate in public meetings of the city without being physically present in compliance with the established conditions. I need a motion to approve the minutes of November fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Some of Eugene.
Second, Alderman Jacob.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Okay, and that passes. I have underwritten communicate, I actually have two. I have a card here. That was so nice of all of you sincere thanks for the no cost vehicle stickers from a very grateful resident. I'm a senior and don't respond as quickly as I ought ought to, Mrs. Trudy Um. Also, another card, dear mayor and city council of Wooddale, there are no words that can fully express the gratitude your kindness deserves, Christie's Restaurant.
Right, Gus.
And next, basically, Happy Thanksgiving, the entire city from the city council and staff. We want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving and stay safe. Mr. Murmas, your report.
Thank you, I have two items tonight. First off, the the governor recently announced the tier three COVID nineteen mitigations for everybody at home that will not affect city services and city hall. We will continue to operate as normal with a modified staffing plan in place to keep residents and staff both safe. In an effort to best serve our residents, we will be encouraging them to do as much business by phone or email as possible and only come to city hall if absolutely necessary. Second item, Santa Claus is coming to town. Since Santa can't make his traditional visit to the tree lighting at city hall this year, he's going to visit the residents instead on Saturday, December fifth, from one P M. to three P M. Santa will ride through the city and wave to all his friends. While he can't visit every street in town, a route was developed to allow everyone to see him without traveling far from their home. A map of the route is available in the November, December community newsletter and will be posted to the city's website and social media. We ask that everyone assembling along the route follow I D P H. and C D C guidelines for gatherings, including limiting the number of people in groups, wearing a mask and maintaining social distance. And I know it's a little early, we still have one more council meeting before Santa's coming, but I thought I'd get the message out there just so people are are ready. That concludes my report.
And I'm ready, I've been a good boy all year. I've been in hibernation for most of it. Next consent agenda. If no objections, we have seven items on the consent agenda. Do I have any objections before I ask for the motion?
No.
Then I need a motion.
I'll make some proof.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sunny, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Okay, and that passes, now I need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item one, approval of a squad car computer replacement in amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Item number two, a resolution approving an agreement with H R Green Development for the Veteran Park Landscaping Plan and an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Item number three, rejection of bids in connection with wind sculpture and veteran medallions lighting. Item number four, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wooddale and the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group for the special condition extension in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Item number five, an approval of purchase of hyper converged cluster maintenance support renewal and amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Item number six, a resolution authorizing an agreement with S B Friedman Development Advisors for Development Advisory Services in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, nine hundred. Item number seven, an ordinance amending the Thorndale Corridor Corporate Zoning Overlay District and amending chapter seventeen Unified Development Ordinance of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to incorporate this overlay district into the U D O. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Messina.
Mute.
I'm a mess, sorry, yes.
Thank you.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning zoning, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, public works, Alderman Catalano.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, finding to the administration, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, I have five reports, Mayor, six. It's a record day for me. First is a resolution approving the amended final plat of subdivision for property located at six fifty and seven fifty North Wooddale Road. Frequently known as seven hundred to seven seventy North Wooddale Road, Wooddale, Illinois. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Catalano, second, any questions?
I have a question.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Refresh my memory, what property is that?
Who wants to take that?
I can take that, Matt, Ed Cage.
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Uh, yes, that is the property, six fifty North Wooddale Road is forward space and seven fifty is the newly built building that's currently vacant.
I'm good, I just, I just didn't remember address, I couldn't.
No problem. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
And that passes.
Next, approval of an internal network switch upgrade in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. That is my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any questions on this? Roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
That passes.
Next is a resolution approving a contract awarded to Heartland Business Systems for Microsoft three sixty-five E three G C C C S P. That is my motion.
Alderman Messina, second. Any questions?
Yeah.
Who's that? What was the question? Does somebody have a question? Somebody said yes.
No, that was me saying yes. This is Randy, I did not have a question.
Okay, roll call please.
Hey, Mayor, did he put the dollar amount not to exceed?
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Is there a dollar amount not to exceed so much money or no, was there a dollar amount in it?
Who's gonna take that, Nick?
Be happy to, so there is not a not to exceed because it's similar to a subscription service.
Oh, got it, okay, I got it, I'm good, I'm good, I got it, sorry. I'm not with it.
All right, we have a motion, any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
And that passes.
Uh, next is a resolution approving a contract awarded to Heartland Business Systems for a next gen endpoint protection solution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You know, we'll snat second, okay.
Move that, was that Tony second or Peter?
Peter.
Questions, Alderman Sorrentino?
Uh, no, I was trying to second something but got shut out again. It's okay.
Shut out at the rear mutual window.
It's okay. I'll second next motion right now.
And any other question? Roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
And Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
And that passes.
Next is a resolution approving a contract awarded to ThinkArt for I T.'s data guard cloud backup storage solution.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yep, Tony.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina. Looks like he's trying to connect.
We can wait a second.
Yes.
Yeah, once again, I got dropped, I don't know if there's phone issues, but yes.
You should call an I T. guy.
I know. You know a good one?
All right.
I meant you, Nick, I meant me.
And that passes. Next.
Thank you, so next is a COVID nineteen stimulus clarification. And with that, I'll make a motion to change that package to four ten dollar certificates.
I'll second that.
That the establishment owners would give change and that they can get paid out weekly and not have to wait two to three weeks to get their money. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Secondary.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody else? Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so just to clarify, I know I heard the motion, but just so we have the pieces right or the language correct, ten dollar coupon and the vendor is required to give change?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure mandatory is where we're going, so just for the language, so.
But that's why we're going to four ten dollars, so if somebody's only buying a burger and a fries and a Coke, he'll use one certificate instead of having to get change on a twenty now, pretty much, if it's eight dollars or eight fifty, he'll get a dollar fifty back or something. So nothing. Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
I haven't, so are we, when we mail these out, are we listing the businesses or the restaurants that are taking part in this?
Yes.
But they'll be placed on the website, there'll be a link on the city's website that they'll be. If someone can't access the web, we will have a list here at city hall so they could call in and ask us if, you know, restaurant X or Y is on the list, so we will have it internally, but I don't believe the intention, the way the piece is going to be set up, that there would be room to include all of that as well as the timing of it, I don't believe to get these out as expeditiously as we'd like. I don't believe that would be in the the cards.
And before we take roll, I do request the motioner and the seconder. We had these requiring February twenty eighth, can we do? This still hasn't gone out and it probably won't get out till middle of December. Can we push it back to the least the last Friday in March, which is like the twenty-sixth or something or March thirtieth, whatever?
Yeah, March, the end of March would be fine.
That that would be fine, I I'm okay with that.
Just to give the extra month because now we've kind of pushed it back a little bit here, so we want to give at least three full months, so it'll be more like three and a half, but just.
So when are we looking to get these out, I'm sorry?
Good, Alderman Wesley, uh, when are they looking to get them out, Mr. Wilson? Are you gonna take that?
Uh, sure, so I mean, the short answer is as soon as possible. However, based on the decision tonight, going to four tens, Mr. Poploskas is gonna have to work with the print vendor to do some redesigns on this, so. And then with next week being Thanksgiving, I'm not sure that it would, there's a couple of weeks lead time, so I presume there would be middle of December would be when they would get out. Just based on, again, the redesign and then next week being Thanksgiving, so a couple of weeks after that would be middle of December.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Any thought into starting this January, whatever, second? I imagine they should see an uptick in business closer to the holiday regardless. At least we start beginning of January and we go through March, getting a full three months.
Doesn't make a difference.
They might not even get them until the seventeenth to the nineteenth of December. It's, you know, they might get them the week of Christmas. They don't have all those, that's why I asked for the extra month because I anticipate some delays on getting them out and everything.
Okay.
Sorrentino be recognized?
Alderman Sorrentino.
You know, you're all rolling your eyes, this is the benefit the businesses of Wooddale, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then why don't we just?
Excluding.
Fine, how about a use it or lose it? People go in there, spend three bucks, they're gonna want seven bucks back, so use it or lose it, here's ten bucks. Maybe they'll spend two dollars more and get two sandwiches and it's a win-win for everyone.
Can I, can I? I I have my hand up on the screen, nobody follows that.
All right, Woods, you're ignored tonight.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, again, so that's kind of a disadvantage to the residents, this is the benefit to residents and the business owners. So to your point, Alderman Sorrentino, somebody probably will go buy and order a french fries and get seven dollars and change, but that's gonna be the exception to the rule. Most people are gonna go there, spend the money, give them the change on the certificate, not care about it, I didn't want to make a million rules. And and so some people are gonna go, wow, I get a certificate and if I don't spend the money, I gotta give that guy money, so. Why, how is that fair to me? So this seemed to be the fairer thing. I understand what you're saying and that's, some of the businesses might say that, you know, could happen and maybe one or two times it will happen, but the majority of the people are gonna go in there. If you go to Shorty's, you're buying meal for yourself, it's gonna cost you twelve to fifteen bucks, so you use one and give them two or three dollars or five dollars for your meal, you can go there four times. If you go with somebody else, you go to Christie's, typically you're gonna spend twenty-five dollars, I mean, so they're gonna make out, I don't, I don't see too many people going in to change out the certificates.
Well, it'd be interesting, Sorrentino here, be interesting. Monitor this. Do you know any way you could do that, Brad?
No, you know what, Sonny, so the basic, why we're going to four tens is so if somebody went in and got a sandwich and spent six dollars or seven dollars, they would get, now they're getting fourteen or thirteen dollars change. Now we're making four tens. And let's face it, if residents are really having a tough time, they're just gonna use this on the water. We were gonna do something separate for the water. Now you have two programs that finance and the staff has to monitor like this. We just made the coupons, they can put the coupons in their water bill, one. Unfortunately, one system doesn't always fit one hundred percent for everybody. Honestly, you might have one or two percent of the people trying to game the system to get a few extra bucks cash. I mean, honestly, they could easily do their water bill and still get that extra cash because now they shortchange their water bill. Go ahead, Alder, Mr. Wilson, did you have a comment to follow up on?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, the only way that we would even be able to do that is if the restaurants proactively wrote that down on the the coupons, which I don't think any of them are gonna are gonna do. That'd be the only way we would be able to know. You know, I just, I just said one more question for clarification and then just, you know. Just, I know you said the change, you know, so where, is there gonna be a minimum purchase required to get any change? So if you go buy a pack of gum, you get the nine dollars back.
We don't have a minimum.
And then just, you know, one point, just to point out, then, you know, the motion is what the motion is, but, you know, staff did survey four restaurants, we've talked to three subsequent to that, and all seven said they did not like the change option. So just pointing it out that we did talk to the restaurants, but like I said, the motion is what the motion is, but that was the results of our limited survey that we did on Tuesday.
No cash value.
Yeah. Can I respond to?
Hold on, Alderman Sorrentino, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, print no cash value on the certificates.
No, because it's it's still worth ten dollars, so if they spend seven fifty, they're gonna get two fifty back. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the survey, the limited survey, and as I read these things, I had to go and calm down after a while. Filed it under no good deed goes unpunished. So certainly, if you ask me a question and allow me to have an option, I don't want to give anybody any change, why would I not want to make more money? And if that's the program you want to run and don't want to give any benefit to the residents, let's just cut it in half, write the business a check and put the rest on the water bill and call it a day. This is the benefit, everybody, the residents and the restaurants, nobody should get any unjust enrichment. They they act like they never ran a business before that they can't give change out. And and part of the motion was to allow them to get their money faster. So if that's an issue, I would imagine with four certificates, people are gonna shop more, go to the restaurant more and make more trips than they would have with the two twenties or or one. So allows them to split them up, everybody's family is a little different. If you're a single person, they're probably gonna use that on four different locations. Some people are just gonna send it on their water bill.
So may I be recognized?
I'm I'm done.
Who's that?
Grant.
Grant, go ahead, Grant.
Um, I have one more question for clarification purposes. Are we going to allow the residents to stack them? For example, can they use more than one on a single purchase?
Yes, well, if their purchase is fifteen dollars and they can hand two in and they're gonna get five dollars back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I mean.
Can I be recognized, Mayor?
If we go to Christie's or Bentley's for breakfast and it's twenty-five, twenty-seven dollars, you're gonna give them three, you could give them three certificates if you want and you'll get the two, three dollars back. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Isn't the objective, I thought, why you guys moved it to four ten dollar ones, is so you can drive people to the business multiple times?
Right, I think that that's the side benefit, yes.
So why, so we shouldn't allow stacking? I'm sorry, Pat.
Well, but if you, so to to your point, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
As to to Alderman Messina's point, I, again, my idea is we don't create so many rules, it's kind of like when the the federal government put the stimulus out, right? They gave you a check and they didn't sit there and say where you gotta spend it and how you gotta spend it, but I think that the four, four certificates is gonna allow people to go to split it up between businesses. So you and your wife might go to Christie's, as the mayor was saying, apologies, and spend twenty-three dollars, so you give them two certificates, three dollars, and then leave a tip in cash, or if your check was, you're by yourself and the check was twelve fifty or fifteen, they could give you change and you leave the change for the tip. And and in more cases than not, probably ninety-five percent of the time, the money's gonna stay there. My thought is that, looking at it and going, give me two twenty dollar certificates saying, I have to spend both, I have to spend this or lose it, is is kind of a disadvantage to me. It's face, it looks like, you know, it's a slap to me going, I don't get the benefit and this guy's gonna get an extra three dollars on top of the. Now fortunately for me, I'm not hurt, but some people, the residents are hurting also, it's not just the businesses, so. Some people are really gonna welcome the forty dollars and right, they're gonna use their advantage, they'll go to the restaurant or place four times and reduce their bill four times by ten dollars.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor. Sorry. This is Mr. Wilson, just.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one last point of clarification, we are, Alderman Wesley had asked about the list. We are gonna have to send out just kind of these revised guidelines. Uh, and then the businesses, you know, we're gonna put a list of who's participating. So in theory, a business could decide to opt out at any point, they could have under the original plan, they could under this plan as well, so.
Correct.
There's a risk, you know, involved on on both sides of the fence, but just wanted to to point out, be on the record that a business could opt out under the original plan or this revised plan if they so chose.
Correct, some people might now want to deal with those coupons. Correct. Some people might now want to deal with those coupons for some reason, and that's their choice. Okay, anything else? Roll call.
Wait, Art's kinda saying, oh.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Closing comment to businesses that may or may not want to participate. I mean, the, the, the city in an effort to help them out is taking $200,000 roughly, micro focusing it on 31 businesses. Anybody that doesn't want to be part of that, I would have to question. You know, that, that, it just doesn't make any sense why anybody would opt out of that. But, as you said, they have the right to do what they want to do, but if they think of it that way, in a short period of time, somebody's pumping $200,000 into the local economy and it's targeted towards a, a very narrow target of, of, uh, businesses. I don't know why anybody wouldn't be in favor of that, but that's just me. Thank you.
Any other questions? I roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino? Alderman Sorrentino, unmute, please.
Okay, do you hear me yet?
Yeah.
My gut's saying no, and I'm gonna go with my gut, so it's no for me.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Hmm, yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, just one comment, uh, some people may notice, uh, there's a little bit of less planes, the air- the airport did open the runway on the north side, uh, which is out in Alcorvila, so that is, uh, they're kind of splitting the two runways and using both of them now. Need a little bit of noise here. That is the end of my report.
Okay, Stormwater.
Could, uh, could I piggyback on, uh, just wanted to share a yeah, thank you. So with the technical committee, O'Hare Technical Committee meeting this past Tuesday, that was, uh, some people thought there were deductions, some people thought that there wasn't a substantial reduction. And so when asked to look into it, uh, what I found out is even though the new runway is technically complete, concrete and structure, uh, the FAA is not done comple- or not complete with the signaling and lighting and approving of that, so technically it's not open or sanctioned for 100% use, so anybody sees that it doesn't change as much as they thought it would be, that's why, and when asked when they would, uh, be complete with that, the, uh, deputy director for O'Hare did not have an answer, but said he would look into it and, uh, get the answer for me, from the FAA.
And while we're on those northern runways, nine right is under construction, correct? So that one is not being used at this time. Is that correct?
Correct. Right, yes.
Okay. All right, under Stormwater Report, Alderman Wesley.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, under approval, list of bills, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for November 19th, 2020, in the amount of $2,4,733.47. That is my motion.
Second.
Here, we have a motion, a second. Any questions on the bills?
Mayor, I only have one.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Uh, I believe it's pay, page one or two, about the drywall for $2,000.
Who wants to take that? Is that Mr. Lang or? Or is that, uh, Mr. Cage? Who's gonna, Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead. I could take that, Mayor, this is Director Lang.
Go ahead.
This is for the, uh, drywall replacement for the wall down by Community Development, which was, uh, experiencing the pest infestation and some mold damage.
Is that, is that? Is that project completed now or what?
Yes, it is complete.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, we have no items, no executive session, no items to be referred. Once again, on behalf of the entire City Council staff, happy Thanksgiving to all the residents. Stay safe, stay safe and healthy. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Mayor. Before we adjourn.
Second. Roll call, please.
Wait, Mayor?
Hold on. Who's got a question?
Sonny does.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, can we just, what the fungal, can we just take a moment of silence and a silent prayer for Sue Turco who passed suddenly, who's been a long time Woodalian and a very, very fine mother, wife, and Park District and PD helper? So please, just a minute by ourselves in her memory. Thank you. Do it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Alderman Jacob, you have something else?
Uh.
Go ahead.
Maybe if we can maybe just have Grant, uh, tell the residents that we had the tree lighting tonight and it's gonna be on video, maybe if he could let the residents know.
Virtual tree lighting, Grant, are you still available? He's still on?
No, I think he went off.
Yeah. Okay, well, the tree lighting, we had a virtual tree lighting this evening, and it will be posted on the city website, uh, maybe tomorrow or Monday. I'm not sure what day. He's gonna add, do some editing. All right, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that, and we're adjourned. Have a good, have a good Thanksgiving, everyone. Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.